I'd like to call to order the Board of Education's special meeting to discuss the budget for Tuesday, January 19th. Present, we expect everybody here, but present at the moment is Jessica Gerbert, myself, Philip Dwyer, Anthony Calabrese, Tricia Pitko, and Jennifer Maxon Cannelly. We have a quorum. If you could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have developed a kind of a routine for going through the budget. The agenda is what will follow. Some questions have been sent in in advance from various board members, and Dr. Tittle will take some time at the beginning of the meeting at less than 30 minutes, or I'll give him the hook, to go over those common questions and answers, since a number of people asked them. And then we'll go through the pages that we're going to be reviewing tonight. I'll ask each board member to limit their questions and answers to 10 minutes, and so we can get all nine of us in at 90 minutes. At 9:30, if it all works perfectly, we'll go to the public for comments, and then we'll come back to the board and see if the board has further conversation they wish to have or wish to defer that conversation to next Tuesday's budget review meeting. The questions that have been sent in in advance, together with those that might be asked tonight, will be consolidated on a single Q&amp;A document that, if all goes well, will be part of the Friday packet, so that you'll have it well in advance of next Tuesday's meeting. And I think that's it, unless there are any questions as to process. If not, Dr. Tittle, what comments do you wish to make?
Well, there were some commonalities in the questions that the board members sent in, and there were topics I think we needed to get to anyways, so I thought we would just start with some of those and do them in public. Excuse me, I'm nursing a cold and a sore throat, so by sound raspy and continually drink water, that's what it's all about. So, there were several questions about health insurance, so I thought we would start with that. And that was such a big part of this budget that we might as well go through it a little more detail. I can do all these topics in less than half an hour, it's a question of how long you all want to spend on them. The other two that were, had multiple questions, had to do with excess cost and special ed tuition versus money in contracted services for ESS, so we'll tackle that next. And there were questions about utilities. If utility rates are going down, why is the budget not going down in utilities? So, we'll walk through that a little bit. Those were sort of the three big ones. There's one other piece I want to share with you, but that's pretty much it in terms of the topics. So, on the health insurance, I think it would be helpful, because it wouldn't be a budget if we didn't do this. If we look at page 159, the medical retention fund, that if all goes according to plan, which it will, this may be the last time you see this page in a budget. And Dorian, I need you to come up and help through this, because this shows how we calculated the budget to ensure that we had enough in our reserve to pay the claims out for the existing plan. It also shows the difference between what the budget would have looked like under the current insurance plan and what the budget would look like under the partnership plan, what the differences are, and we came up with those figures that you saw on the PowerPoint. Oh, thank you. So, then there were questions about Aon and the Cadillac tax, and maybe the approval process, or how the unions were involved, but I think the important thing is, let's make sure we're clear on the numbers here. So, Dorian, why don't you maybe just walk us through the highlights of this page, because it differs from the page that they've seen in previous budgets.
True. Columns three and four, the superintendent's budget, is what it would have looked like under the current plan. That's the gray columns. Column three is this year's claims through November. Now, what we talked about with Aon in December was through October. This is updated through the latest available information we had at the time, which was through November. So, we start with the balance, the July 1 balance, the operating budget, the other sources of revenue, this ITT Hartford, the projected claims, this is what Aon projected through, based on the November experience, for a balance of the $2,256,000 with an IBNR of $1,980,000 for a net balance of the $276,000. You might remember in, with the October numbers, that was a negative, about the same number, but in a negative position. So, then we move over to 16th, 17th. Again, this is the, you know, the balance, the projected operating budget based on the updated claims, updated revenue, you know, same concept down the column, with a balance of $2.256, an updated IBNR $2.15, and a net balance of $105,000. Then we move over to columns five and six. This is the superintendent's budget under the Connecticut Partnership 2.0 plan. Everything for column five is the same as column three, because that doesn't change. We're still under that scenario for this year, ending with the $2.256. Now, when we get into next year, column six, the cash moves over. The $20 million is the budget that we need under that, under this plan. We broke out the other revenue with, between employee contributions, retirees, grants, and rebates. Move down to the pink and the red area, down, and those are the projected medical and dental claims in pink. We included as an expense the $1,980,000, which is the IBNR, because we do need to have that money available to pay off the runoff claims that will be incurred before June 30th, but will be paid afterwards. The $500,000 is a reserve we put in there, because we still have, at this time, you know, through November, we still had seven months left to go, where the, there's going to be, there could be volatility in our claims for this year, so that's a little bit of a reserve, just in case those claims go south, which we know they can. Leaves us with a cash balance of the $276,000. So, column seven shows the differences between the two different budgets. Had we budgeted under the self-insured plan, which we're currently under for next year, and what column six is under the Connecticut Partnership plan. So, you'll see in blue, for next year, the second blue number, we totaled, the impact on the Board of Ed, the savings, is almost $3.5 million, which is the $3.349 under the BOE operating budget, and the other blue number down further, which is grants, which is also a savings to us. In the orange, those differences are what the employees would reap the benefit of, so almost $975,000 in total savings to employees under the new, under the Connecticut plan. Down below further is the, in the pink, is the difference in the cost, and the $2.48 is the additional reserve for the IBNR and the volatility, potential volatility in claims this year. Column eight, in purple, is the difference in the budget between the, both scenarios, the superintendent's budget and the Connecticut Partnership.
That's it?
That's it.
So, the question of, we really have to have a real reserve this year, because we're actually going to pay the claims off, so we are estimating, or Aon is estimating, actually we just inflate the number, they give us a number, we trend it out, $2.151,576. If we didn't add anything to the next year's budget, we still have a balance, projected balance of $276,463. So, between that and the $500,000, we have a cushion right now of $776,463 to account for if there's a deterioration in claims between now and June 30th of 2016. That's what we put in there, and, you know, every month, there'll be an update from Aon about our actual claims and what they project them to be. That, to them, seemed like a fair figure to put in there. So, I think we'll stop there and see if there's any questions. That's the most complicated part of the whole thing. The other questions are fairly simple.
Board members who had questions, Mr. Patton?
Through the chair to Dr. Tittle. Actually, not some of the questions I had originally on this, but the $500,000 that's added to the $276,463, that's an extra amount that's budgeted or added to this current budget that we're working on now.
It's included.
It's included in.
Included in the budget that I presented to you.
Okay.
All right, so it's not, we don't have to add that to the budget. That is included in the number that we added in the budget.
So, I'm not sure, when you're saying it's included, I mean, is it an extra dollar amount that normally, you know, had we not gone into this plan, been included?
Correct.
So, I guess we're, I mean, did we, we added an extra half a million dollars just in case to cover the 2015, 16?
Claims.
IBNR, right.
Yes, that's correct.
To cover the next seven months of unknown claims.
Right, so we may or may not need that amount.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's it?
Yeah.
Other questions related to medical insurance, Mr. Llewellyn?
Thank you. So, if we look at the ending balance of $276, which is the bottom of column six, and that would be our net balance, that would be cash that's returned to the district if the scenario above were laid out?
Well, the cash never goes back to the district. It sits over in the town's Internal Service Fund.
Okay, so, let's look at the $500. So, the $500,000 that we've got in that column is $500 that it will leave the district to go over to the Internal Service Fund, or will stay here?
Correct. It's going to the Internal Service Fund.
Okay, so, if our IBNR is.
Well, let's put it this way, should we need it?
Correct.
Right, should we need it, that will not, so what's going to happen is, the state's going to send us a bill for the number of people we have, and per head, here's how much you owe, and we send them that amount in, and that's the end of it. So, we would not, we would not have to move that money into medical retention, but that's the intent of it, because we need to move money into medical retention to pay the bills from the state. But we need money in July to pay the runout, so.
Sorry, to pay which bills? If our IBNR comes in, sorry, if our IBNR comes in at $1,980,000, right on plan? Which is the number in red in column six labeled Reserve for Potential, nope, sorry, Cigna runoff, right?
Cigna runoff, right.
Okay, so that $1,980,000, we hit it on the head, so we have that $500,000. Will we have transferred that $500 to the reserve?
I don't know if we would need to do that, actually. We could leave it. We could leave it.
Okay, so that would be a surplus.
Yeah, we could leave it. The $276 is already sitting there.
And the two, I was going to say, so the $276 is already money left at the town for the runoff of other claims in the health fund, so to speak.
If I could comment on your, where I think you're heading, it would be my guess is that we would not automatically on July 1 put that money in the medical retention fund, but that some staff member would be closely monitoring the bills that are coming in, because if bills more than $1,980,000 come in, then we'll have to transfer the money to that fund so that we could pay them. So, it'll be something that probably happens in July or August, because doctors don't always, you know, get the bills out exactly on time.
We don't know.
So, it'll be monitored for those first two months, I think.
But, in essence, couldn't the bills come in at a million, sorry, $2,300,000 almost, and we not have to transfer the $500, because we have a net balance of $276?
Right, if we know that.
So, we can run the $276 to zero before we put in the $500?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Right. It's hard to know what that number's really going to be.
Of course.
Obviously, every month that goes by, it's closer and closer to real. So, yeah, and this is a one-time event. When this budget's done a year from now, that $500 won't be in there.
Right, so another way to put it is, if the IBNR comes in at north of $2,256,000, then we have to fund the $500, otherwise that surplus to our.
Or some portion thereof.
Right, or a portion of it. And also, you know, at this point, the state's given us an estimate about what the rates will be. Those rates won't get finalized till April, so they told us for budgeting purposes, add 2% to the spring rates, that's how you should budget it. But what if it's two and a half, or three? Then we could use the $500,000 toward that as well, because it would still be, you know, So, that's another, you know, there's still a few unknowns here, and one of them is what the actual increase will be, but the state, every quarter, they increase their rates, so they're not saying you have to go like a full 5%. They're saying, go 2% over the latest rates, that's their best guidance.
Is that what we've used?
That's what we used.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on medical retention fund? If not, we'll move on to the second question. Is there any? No, I don't think.
Well, there were a couple of questions about Cadillac tax, right?
Why don't you address the Cadillac tax, even though nobody's followed up with it?
Okay, Cadillac tax and Aon, I guess.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so, Aon earns their money through a contingency arrangement with the town. And essentially, what happens is, when you're self-insured, you need them quite a bit to do all these calculations, and so the rates that we were paying with Cigna or anybody sort of built in Aon's fee into the rates. They get a percent, I don't know what it is. If, and when we move everybody over to the Connecticut Partnership, there'll be no need for Aon. They're not part of this. There's no need to do all this estimating, because basically, the state, it's like being fully insured. You've got a rate, that's it. Doesn't matter what your claims are. We still could use them if we needed them for projects, but they'd still be under contract to the town, provided that the town doesn't switch over, but we would not have any real need for Aon, and so they would be sort of out of the picture. Cadillac tax has been deferred by Congress and the President to 2020. Going to this health plan reduces the value of our health insurance plan, so it actually pulls us farther away from the Cadillac tax. So, really, that's out in the distance, given the way that that thing was pushed off in a bipartisan manner. It seems pretty clear from the politics that that thing is just never coming back. It had the support of both the conservative Republicans, who just, anything to do with Obamacare, if they could vote it down, they could, and it's a tax, so they vote against those. And of course, the liberal Democrat side, we're getting a lot of pressure from Labor and so forth, who were going to be forced to pay this thing. So, that was an interesting coalition, and it really takes a big burden off of our necks. But even if we're still there, even if it stays in 2020, they'll have to go in and adjust the number, because they had a number in mind for 2018, so it's really out of the picture. I think this puts us in a better place, and it probably is never coming back, and we got four years to figure it out. I think that's about it.
Okay. Sorry, one additional question. Column seven, current plan versus plan, the $700,000 rebate, I apologize, I missed, if you'd said what that was. It's the last number in the top section, under income, rebate.
Good, Dorian.
Is your question, what happens to it?
What is it? What's it due?
The rebates.
It's rebates from, under Cigna, no, no, Cigna, under CVS Caremark. We get rebates from them for the, on the drug side. That would go away, because we wouldn't, we wouldn't get the revenue.
Okay. Got it, okay, thank you.
Next topic?
The other topic had to do with excess cost and the way we're budgeting that, tuition. As you can see, there's a big change in the tuition line versus the professional services line.
Page number?
Why don't we start on page, I can find it in a couple places. Well, somebody asked a question about the revenue, so let's go to the revenue section, and that was the one under discussion. So, let me find that page.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a quick follow-up on the county tax?
Sure.
You lost your chance.
Page 24, we'll start there, because that shows the excess cost. So, basically, the question was, why is there a difference there, or what are we doing with that? We really budgeted the same amount of money, we budgeted it at 75%. We moved it into these accounts the way it's described here. There's a little less going into tuition than the budget number, because the expenditures on the tuition are going to be going down, so, because of the way we're reducing the outplacements at the high school, and we're, we took the gross number down, so when you take that number down, we take the net number down. Is that about it, Andrea?
Yes, essentially, that's correct. You could have a student who last year, at this time, was in an expensive residential placement, for example. They graduate or age out of service, and a new student who's in district placed with very high needs, that changes a big portion of where that money would go. So, because that number of excess cost is based on a number of students we file in December, it's where their costs are going that we have to track, and that's how we decide where the money's going to go in those accounts. So, they can fluctuate pretty significantly, based on who the children are receiving excess cost reimbursement.
All right. Is that clear, how we're doing that?
Any follow-up questions?
And the, yeah, the other, related to that is, that you'll see in here, you know, large shifts in the budget to reflect the move we made this year, and we're continuing into next year. So, the sped out-of-district tuition account is going down, but the professional services is going up. So, let's look for that in the executive summary. I can point it out in the, so, in the executive summary, I think it's under six.
Page number?
Block six, I'm going to find it in a second.
Tuition's on 41.
Yeah. It's hard to do now that Donna gave me that lozenge, and I'm holding it in my hand, so. Yeah, tuition's on 41. All right.
And people personnel services is on 37.
Right. So, on 41, you can see the decrease there in the tuition, because we're expecting fewer outplacements next year. So, that becomes the negative number, and that's total tuition. That includes special ed as well as regular ed, like tuition we pay to VoAG and so forth. Those are going down a little bit, but about 645 of that number is the special ed number. The, and then the contracted services where the big increase is, people personnel services on page 37, and that's number 303, and that's going up, and that's where, that number's going up, but that also includes some additional services that are going up. So, Andrea, can you explain the other people personnel services that are going up, in addition to the mental health initiative at the high schools?
Yes, I think also we have to remember that we are a pre-K-12 school district, so the work we're doing right now in the high school does not include our pre-K-8 population, and we are seeing some significant issues related to mental and behavioral health in those arenas, so there are, there may still be outplacements or other things that we have to do, because we don't yet have the services within the schools at the intensity level they may need. So, while this project at the high schools is beginning to bear fruit, and we think that kids are stabilizing within the school and not needing to go out, we've seen that over now the first semester. We can't forget that we do have a pre-K-8 population as well, where we still see some movement in that domain. We also have our OTPT costs, which have kind of historically been underfunded anyway. We've tried to bump a little money into there to bring it more in line with what we actually need in that account, and then we have a slight increase in the contract service hours. So, the hourly rate has gone up slightly, and we work with rehabilitation associates in town. They've always provided us a tremendous rate for the work they do for us in the OTPT arena, but they need to pay the bills too, so there's a slight increase in that account. So, some of the increase is just for an increase in cost, and some is a slight readjustment for a historically underfunded account. So, that really accounts for the bulk of that $800,000.
The savings, the increased costs of the consulting that is resulting in the reduced high school population, what is, what is that number if we wanted to compare it against the 645?
That's slightly less than $650,000.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else you want to say on that issue? Questions from the board on that change of service methodology, I guess you would call it? Questions from the board on that topic?
If you want to see the other tuition, the whole tuition breakdown in more detail, it's on page 90, if you want to see the other tuitions we pay. That's just a, if you'd like to look at that at your leisure. Utilities was the next topic. Thank you, Andrea.
You're welcome. Ms. Connell?
Thank you. Through the chair to Ann-Jo. And I know this is a program that we just started, have we started tracking how many people are not having to be outplaced as a result of the services we're putting in, or is it just too early, because we're starting?
Well, we're still, I would say we're still in startup, so we're still beginning and working with families, bringing them into the service. We have had a tremendous response from the kids who are receiving the service. Their grades are improving, their attendance is improving. We have had, of the kids who are receiving the service, we have had only one student end up being hospitalized, which is significant for that family, for, you know, for all of the families, because these kids have experienced a lot of significant issues over the past couple of years. One of the benefits of this program that we're seeing is, we're also seeing our own school psychologists, social workers, and school counselors being more able to intervene early with kids who aren't in such deep levels of distress. So, we're hoping, or we're anticipating, or we're, Karen hypothesizing, that, you know, we'll see some real benefits in that as well, but we have not had to place a student out of district, and in fact, we've actually been able to bring a couple of students back to district, and are anticipating a couple of more returns to district for the September, start of the September semester. So, right now, we're very. So right now, we're very optimistic. We're seeing really great data, and at the end of the year, we'll be able to report back to the board about, you know, all the kinds of things that we've seen. But right now, things are continuing month by month to be very positive.
And we have enough services, hopefully, the population of the students using it, but will we have enough services if the population of the students needing it?
Increase, were to increase? Well, with the contract and with ESS, we'd be able to increase the level of service to meet more student need. Right now, we have the capacity to meet, to do this intensive work with about 45 students, 18 at each high school and nine at the Walter Fitzgerald campus. So we have about 45 student capacity. If we needed more, then we'd contract for more support from them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, on to utilities.
Hey, I think we have to go to the detailed pages to get into this a little bit. So page 46, many Tom or maybe Doreen. Calculating utilities for this district is quite tricky. But basically, we have put more square footage online year over year, and we've also started more mechanical means of fresh air and air conditioning in these places. And we anticipate additional utility costs, obviously, because we think we're going to be adding two portables at Holland Hill next year, and they have to be heated and serviced run there. We added space at, obviously, at Riverfield, considerable amount of square footage there. We added space at, and air conditioning at the whole building at Riverfield. Ludlow High School, we added square footage and mechanical means of, you know, fresh air, right? And so those were the, those were the big ones. We do have built in some of the savings from the solar at the two high schools. That is calculated in. And the rates have gone down, and we've been doing these utility projects to reduce it. But basically, the biggest thing that's happening is that we're adding square footage, and we're adding more.
Equipment.
Equipment. What did I forget on there, Tom or Doreen?
For you.
Yeah. I'm sure I missed something. Now, that's the short answer.
Fairford Woods Middle School had added square footage, almost 16,000 square feet. Ludlow High School, almost 12,000 square feet, and Riverfield, almost 18,000 square feet. And we added an HVC unit to Osborne Hills Gym that never had it, and we renovated that gym.
Do we put mechanical means of fresh air?
Mechanical means of fresh air is a whole mechanical system for Riverfield.
Yep.
And it will be proposed for Holland Hills, it's coming up. So these are old, old elementary schools that only had exhaust systems.
Right. Thanks. That's pretty much the answer.
Okay, any general question, any questions on the utilities calculations that any board member has that might want to ask at this time? Of course, you can, if you think of something, you can ask it during your 10-minute segment two.
All right.
Ms. Maxon, Carnell.
Just one quick follow-up. This is one of the questions I'd submitted, but so then on line or item 311, utility services, the going down of 59,000 despite greater square footage, you attribute to more efficient machines and the use of solar. That's where we would see those savings. Because I'd been questioning the solar, so.
Right. Solar, but the high schools will save us, you know, decent amount of money. The elementaries aren't in yet, and we weren't sure when they were going to go in. I mean, they're approved and so forth, but they don't really save a ton. I mean, it's a very small number, relatively speaking, but every little bit helps. But that's where, you know, the more energy-efficient light bulbs that, you've heard of those projects, and we're doing everything we can to conserve, but, you know, some of that gets outdone when you add, you know, air conditioning and square footage.
Thank you.
Yep. The last explanation I want to give is, on pages 128 to 131, we budgeted elementary classroom teachers a little differently than we have done in the past. We keep getting burned by budgeting exactly to the student, and then having new students move into the district just in the wrong places. And one of the reasons this year we had to add so many teachers was because we had move-ins to the district, and we had to hire five elementary teachers. And it just seemed to me that it doesn't make a whole lot of sense when you know you've got all these classes that are within one of being split to keep going, because you know you're setting yourself up for a problem. And so we calculated it differently. The elementary enrollment overall is projected to go down by 83 students. But if you budgeted 16, 17 exactly the way we did it in the past, you actually come up with a negative 12 teachers. Well, common sense would indicate that with 83 students, you shouldn't be going down 12 teachers. And the chances of us actually realizing that are slim to none. And we don't want to be in a position of having to add five or six teachers next year because it's very hard to cover that kind of a thing. So I just wanted to be clear about what we did, and the reason this looks different is that what we did was anywhere there was a student, or there was a projected class that was one or two below creating a new section. Look, for example, at Holland Hill. Holland Hill has the fourth grades projected to have three 25s. One more student, and that gets split. So kind of why wait for that? As invariably it happens. And they have a second grade, if we add two students, they'll have to split. So we added back a teacher for that. So anywhere you see a yellow or a green, we added a teacher, and those are calculated over to the right in yellow and green. And then in one instance, we have one class that if one student moves out, that class will get collapsed, and that's Dwight's projected first grade. So we subtracted that, took that out. And so that's, the net of all that is seven, so that we budgeted for a minus five. That's, remember my presentation, we budgeted minus five for elementary teachers. And that's where it came from. So, you know, you could budget minus 12, and then you run a huge risk that you're going to need to add five, six, 17 teachers next year. Always not prudent. So we were very clear about how we did it and what the math on it was, and I just wanted to point that out. That's how the budget was built.
Ms. Lou McCormick?
So just on that methodology, so this is for budgeting purposes only, are you actually going out and hiring the budget? Or like, how do you, how are you actually?
Right. Yeah, so this is for budget purposes only. We monitor this, obviously, throughout the spring and into the summer, and decisions are made in the middle of August based on enrollment changes that have happened. So in the event that, say, that first grade at Dwight, let's suppose that, you know, middle of August, near the end of August, that's still 15, 16, 16, we don't collapse it just because the budget says collapse it. That would stay intact. So we apply the class size guidelines at the last possible moment based on the actual enrollment at the time. This is really just a way to budget it. So at the same time, if you're a Holland Hill parent, you shouldn't be saying, aha, you know, we're definitely going to have four sections in grades two and four next year. That's only if the numbers dictate that. And just like at Dwight, you shouldn't be worried, oh, my God, they're going to collapse it. That's only if the population actually shifts that way. Is that? Do it. Okay, good. I'm glad you asked that because people could get nervous.
I could see people just starting to say, oh, my God, they're going to collapse it.
They're going to collapse it. Right, right, right. So we apply the class size guidelines, you know, at the last possible minute and hire accordingly. That's it for me.
Ms. Carnell?
Through the chair to, I'm not sure who can answer this, but have anybody looked at this again as a result of GE moving out of our wonderful town?
No, this was done based on the October 1 enrollment. There's little way to get a handle on exactly what that's going to mean to us and the timing of that. So obviously, we couldn't take that into account this budget. You know, these projections were done back in October. We will get some projections from Alona McBroom in February, which I don't know how that will compare to this. They're a little more recent, but I don't think we'll see a big, a big difference. I'm really just trying to cover us in the event that we get our usual two or three kids move into a school and they happen to always be at the class, that we have to split it, which is what happened this year.
Is that it, Ms. Carnell? Okay. So on to the round robin, 10 minutes of worth of questions per board member. You don't have to take the whole 10 minutes, and we'll use that as a guide so that I can move around so that all nine of you have an opportunity to ask questions. And again, aiming at around 9:30 to go to the public and then back to the board to see if there's any further conversation you want tonight, and if not, then we'll move on to the next Tuesday's meeting. Not in any particular order, but who would like to start with some questions?
Could I just make a comment or request of the chair? Is it possible or easier to maybe, again, start numerically and say, you know, pages, whatever, 20 to 25?
There's a variety of methods to do it, and this, for me, is just a way of making sure that every board member has equal opportunity.
Understood. Take it away.
So that doesn't mean you want to start?
It does not.
Okay. Who wishes to start with any questions for the staff on the budget?
Well, I guess we're done.
Do I have a motion for, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Was that good? Was that clear? Jennifer?
Thank you. Ms. Maxon, Carnell.
Okay, I had seen that several of my questions had been duplicated by a few other board members, or at least in conversation, so I'm going to get to the ones that only I had had in hopes that they ask theirs, and I get that answer then. And a lot of my questions, while I'm finally after, on my fifth go-around, getting a better grasp, I know I get a lot of questions, so I want to be able to answer those. So I'm going to go in page order because that's the order I did my questions in. Page 15, which talks about the cultural competency and the state mandate. I actually already had one question, and it was a question that sort of was similar to my own, which is, how does that come with any financial? Again, I think it's always good to know of any educational state mandates that are coming down to us, but to say this description sounds like something we're already doing or education already is. I was wondering what kind of financial impact comes with this?
Just ends up in Andrea's department, as it turns out.
I think Andrea should probably just stay at the table.
That's fine. She loves it.
Concise answers will help, Jennifer.
I will do my best. The legislation requires that every school district plan for and map a culturally competent social and emotional learning curriculum. And while we have places in different parts of the core curriculum, particularly like in the health classes, that deal with pieces of SEL work, advisory at the high school and newly coming in advisories at the middle school, there's no real map across the district. So the fiscal impact of that, of this is not necessarily in buying something new. It's time with teachers and time with a group of stakeholders to really map what's happening pre-K through 12 in this arena, and then understanding how we embed this in the course of the curriculum. Because it's not, we don't take social and emotional learning class. Right? Right? So we need to embed that. And so what we're looking to do is to create a framework so we understand where different SEL skill sets are taught, where they're encouraged, what is age-appropriate SEL work. And then the other piece of cultural competence is challenging the status quo. So when you do that, you need to bring in some folks who challenge your thinking, and you look at what's happening culturally, you know, in the community in the country right now. One of the things that would be a hotbed for us to challenge ourselves as a community on is addressing issues of immigrants and refugees and religious pluralism and those kinds of things. So if you ask, if you put 100 people in a room and said, do you have any issues with race or religion? Or most people would say no. And yet we have a country that is suffering from a number of issues related to that. So we always have to bring some people to really push our buttons a little bit and open up that conversation when you're talking about cultural competence and social and emotional learning. So you would expect, or I think we should expect then that we're going to hear this phrase as we get the social studies curriculum, for example, that that would be a place, one place where it would be embedded? I think it's going to start with the framework, and then we're going to begin to find where these things are taught and be able to point people specifically to where teaching occurs, where expectations increase as students get older in being able to accept new ideas and debate them freely without turning into a negative, addressing those kinds of cultural competence issues across the curriculum. And does part of the state mandate come with a reporting aspect? Are we having to say how we are fulfilling this? Well, right now, it looks like we'll have to present a plan, but every year, the legislation gets added on to. And so we'll present a plan. Typically, it will come before you for approval. It will have to be approved by the state, and then it'll sit in a drawer. So it's a process with legislation and bringing this to the forefront. Okay. This all started with the bullying legislation a few years ago, and these are just, each year, the legislature adds layers to this. Okay.
You can see the fiscal impact of this and some other mandates that Andrea manages. On page 86, under line 62, pupil personnel services, conference staff development district. We bumped that up last year because of the dyslexia mandate.
Yes.
Still, that's ongoing. So that budget used to be 20,000. This year, it's 80,000. Next year, it's 150,000. So you want to follow the money on the mandates? There it is.
Thank you. That's exactly what I wanted to know. I mean, in addition to everything else, impact. All right, thank you. My next question is open choice. Is that Andrea also?
Actually, no.
Oh, okay.
Again, page number would always be.
Yes, so page 18. Actually, page 18 is where it's mentioned, and then the budget aspect is on page 22. So I had a couple of questions in terms of how the money was being spent regarding the open choice program, and I know it appears on yet another page. I don't, I don't have the, oh, I'm sorry, on page 24, I see that it's going towards what appears to be two staff members. And my question is, in terms of benefit to the whole district, which I support the open choice program, but I'm curious, you know, in their roles of enhancing and enriching programs, which is what open choice is doing, does this money also, how is it benefiting other students as well?
So I believe those are part-time, they're paying a portion of individuals at the elementary schools, right? Is that the right answer?
MST's.
MST's, right. So this money used to come in as basically undesignated money when I first got here. And so it was sitting there. So in order to be fiscally prudent and transparent, I said, we need to tell people where we're going to spend it. And so when we added in MST's in the first year I was here, we decided to partially pay for them out of this open choice because this money was undesigned. So in fact, we just make a partial, part of the salary of the MST's is, at the elementary schools, is paid out of this grant, and there's really not much more to it than that. And they're very flexible about how we use that. So actually, this benefits all the students because we're able to fully fund MST's in every elementary school without having the board pay the full cost.
Okay, so then I'm unclear on why it references 2.0 FTEs.
That's what the totals, in other words, it's fractions.
Okay, so we would see that more clear when we're actually going into the school-by-school breakdown.
Right. You'll see some people are in there, you know, .83 paid out of the district, .17 paid out of the grant. Is it .2, .210 schools? It's even simpler than that. And got rid of hundreds wherever she could. So it's basically, how much money will it take? I mean, it might have been when we started this, it paid for 2.4, but as salaries have gone up and that number hasn't gone up, we've had to cut that back. It's been running around 180, 185,000 a year. It's not really gone up very much, so it was basically. So, it was basically money that was coming in. It's always been coming in. It was never designated, and that's how we did it.
Okay. Thank you. Next. I'm crossing out something. Oh, go ahead.
If we have follow-ups on specific topics, should we do that now or come back later? How would you like to proceed?
I'm fine. Go ahead.
Fine follow-up?
So, if our actual 1415 open choice was 194, 194,000, and it dropped to 180, did we have a lower number of open choice students? Because I thought our number had actually gone up.
The number varies. It depends how many kids are graduating, and then how many open seats there are, and then how many seats that CES manages this. We might have open seats in the school, but they don't have anyone to put him in. It's highly variable, so that's one part. Second part is that depending on the state's situation, which is always fluid, there's a bonus money that comes. And some years, it comes, and some years, it doesn't, and we can't quite figure out why. So, we sort of budget at, you know, reasonably conservatively. Every once in a while, we get a few extra bucks in there, but it has not moved around much over time. We've been pretty consistent with the number of open choice kids. It's 3,000 a kid, so we've been running roughly 60 open choice kids most of the time I've been here.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Maxon-Cannelli?
Yeah.
Same thing, you're...
Sure.
Just one clarification on the open choice. So, if we have about 60 kids, then, and the cost per student is about 15,800, what we're saying is that we get a rebate from the state of 3,000 per student? Is that what page 18 says on the open choice?
So, you're referencing the average.
Right.
Right. And...
I mean, I don't know how much each kid is actually, because I guess it'd be different depending on the services each kid uses, so...
Well, not quite. But this is a little bit of Economics 101, right? There's a difference between the average cost and the marginal cost. And that is, marginal cost is, if one additional student comes, how much more does it cost us, cost the district? Versus, how much does the average student cost, right? Because if one more student shows up, if you've got, say, three kindergarten sections of 16 at a school, and we add one student to that class, our costs don't go up 15,000. Costs go up next to nothing. We're not adding a teacher. We have plenty of materials. We have plenty of desks. Really costing is zero. So, that 3,000 is a bonus to the district. It's not a net negative. It's a net positive, right? So, we're very strategic about this, right? When we tell CES where we have open seats, we will not open any open choice seats where we're anywhere close to the addition of that one student will cost us to have to add a teacher. We only take them in the early grades, kindergarten, first grade. So, in fact, as we take in open choice students into open spots, this is a net money positive for us. It's not a negative. It's not costing us $12,000 every kid we take in.
I think it's a matter of perspective, because you can never know if, in fact, there's another marginal kid, if there's five other kids that are going to move in, and that fifth kid now pushes this over. If we had had one less, we wouldn't have had to hire another teacher. It's kind of arguable, like which way you go. I mean, I'm just using average numbers just to keep the conversation simple. I understand the marginal discussion and argument, but you could say that about any kid in the district.
That's true.
Since that's a point of argument, can I go back to Ms. Maxon-Cannelli?
Right. I mean, it's not like, I just want to understand. So, that was really the concept, was that it was $3,000 of rebate per, to subsidize the cost of any incremental open choice student.
Right. It's a grant, not a rebate.
Oh, sorry, grant.
Yeah.
Ms. Maxon-Cannelli?
And also, that's also why I asked the question, in what ways is this money a benefit to all of our students?
Right.
So, that's just another point. My next question was on page 33, and I was wondering about item 135, the increase in degree changes that we have, that many faculty projected, that they're going back for additional?
Yeah, so Anne, you can come up and do it. Anne does this, and we have a whole process for it, and it happens to be a year when a lot of faculty are, have told us they're going to have degree changes.
We'll save your throat a little bit.
Thank you.
So, that's exactly what happens. We send out an email in September that staff have to respond to, letting us know if they're anticipating moving up a step, whether bachelor's to master's, master's to sixth year, et cetera. So, we then actually budget the salary increase for that person, knowing what the step is for next year. We budget that amount. If, by the time we start doing the budget in October, someone has not come forward, they come forward in December, "Oh, I forgot to reply to that. Sorry, you have to wait a year," because we actually budget the dollar increase for each. This particular year, we seem to have a lot of staff members who are anticipating completing their degrees either this June or in December. They can get a half a year increase as well, and we budget a half a year increase.
And just as a quick follow, and I don't know if you would know this, if it's purely a degree change, or is any part of this, do we have information on, is this going for administrator's degree, or is this going for greater expertise in their subject?
Yeah, it could be an administrator who's going from the salary schedule to a doctoral degree. We've had a couple of administrators doing that, and that would be calculated. There's a salary differential there as well.
I think you're asking about the programs that they're in.
Yeah.
They could be in administrative programs. They could be in...
Correct.
Programs going for dual certification in special ed. They could be in program to get a master's in their subject area, any planned program that meets the parameters of the contract that Anne's approved. So, it's a wide range. In fact, that's been a highly variable number. A couple of years ago, we dropped it way down, you know? We had like $100,000 appear to be a windfall. So, it just sort of goes and ebbs and flows.
But it is a more predictable number, because it are, you know, it is staff members who are currently in classes, in a program, who are telling us, "I think I'm going to be done by this, you know, time period." Now, if they don't finish, they're not paid the increase. So, you know, it's possible that that number could come in lower. We just don't know yet.
Okay.
I'd like to move on to another board member.
Okay.
According to my clock.
Okay.
Who wishes to...
Although I lost some of my time, but...
But like Congress, the answers take.
It's fine.
And yes, if the board member has the answer they want, feel free to let the staff person know, "I understand, I have another question." They won't mind not having to go on. Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, through the chair to Dr. Title. I just wanted to go back...
Page number?
Well, it's just kind of a general question regarding the new health insurance. I just wanted to get a sense if I know, this was something I think that came out of when you were meeting with other superintendents in the state when you first heard of this. So, I was just curious, is this something that, this is just starting this year, that it's available to school districts? So, this is the first time that any school district can take advantage of this? Is that correct?
Yes. The legislation that allowed this to happen went into effect October 1st.
Okay.
And so, then the state rolled out the plan. So, technically, if a school district was really on the ball and could move all of their people over, you conceivably could have joined it sooner, but realistically, July 1 is the earliest anybody could do it, and we had to move rapidly to hit that. So, it was legislation from the last session. So, yes, it just became available.
Okay. And then, just out of curiosity, do you know, are any other districts looking into this? I mean, you don't have to say who they are. I was just curious if anyone else was.
Let's just say that Doreen has received a lot of phone calls. I'll also say that at my last executive board meeting of the Superintendents Association, they made a presentation, the state made a presentation to all those superintendents and gave them the background, so I'm sure they went back and having people look at, look into it. But, you know, looking into it, and then getting all your ducks in a row, and getting approvals, and getting all the questions-answer people have in the time that we did it in is much faster than most places can do it. So, yeah, there's a lot of people, I think Doreen's been flooded with inquiries.
And we're charging a consulting fee for your telephone time?
Yeah, we've got all the tough questions.
Other questions?
Yeah, well, I guess then, just moving on to a different topic. It's mentioned on page 9, and I think it's mentioned somewhere else as well, just talking about the TIPS reporting system. I just was curious, I know that that was something that we had a lot of a discussion about, that we gave a presentation, and I'm just kind of curious to see kind of where we are now. I mean, it seemed to me as if it was viewed as being as a success, and this is something that we want to continue moving forward as it is now, so there aren't, there isn't any need for expansion or reduction. And I was just curious also if you had any sense of, you know, how much time that, is this creating tremendous amount of more work, or is it actually helping kind of streamline the process perhaps? I just wanted to get a sense of that.
The TIPS program is our anonymous or discreet reporting system that we implemented about a year ago, almost, we implemented about March of last year. And it has been a very positive addition to our work in school safety, in bullying prevention, in intervention, in a number of ways. For any of you who have been on the site, we really are, we're opening up opportunities for students, parents, community members, staff members to report to us, either anonymously or discreetly, on a number of issues. And we've had, we've had great, I don't know if successes is the right word, but kids are using it, families are using it. We're getting reports, both anonymously, about 40% of the reports we get are anonymous. The rest are discreet, and, you know, they give us their names and contact information, which allows us to do further investigation with them, which has always been helpful. So, we do encourage that, but certainly about 40% are anonymous. We have identified students in need of supports who are struggling. Their friends have said, "I'm worried about my friend," and that's been helpful. We've had bullying reports. We've had a number of different reports where kids are seeking help for other kids. So, you know, I see it as a great success for very little money, so we're continuing it at the same level. We did some updated training in the fall, just to, you know, maintain our follow-up procedures. And in terms of workload, I think we're getting reports in a new way, but it hasn't been an explosion of, you know, remember, we were a little worried that it was just going to be this explosion of reports. It hasn't. The reports come in here and there, but, you know...
But perhaps they've simply shifted from when there were other ways that students or parents or faculty could say something. Now, instead, it's just going all to this one.
No, you know, we still have the same number of people who will give us a call, or a kid who will go see a staff member. This just gives that one additional way for the kid who might be, for the student who might be a little reticent, or the family who doesn't, you know, who's maybe heard something but doesn't want to step too into someone else's business, so...
And then, I guess, just in terms of, you know, so I guess you said about 60% are anonymous and 40 are discreet?
About 40% are anonymous?
40 are discreet, okay. So, in any event, but with the anonymous ones, obviously, when we, you know, you presented this to us and we discussed it, one concern was that it was perhaps going to result in things that couldn't be followed up on, because you didn't have anyone to check with. Has that been an issue, or actually has it turned out to be not a problem, and that there's still able to be ways to help with situations, even if you don't have a specific person to talk to?
Having an anonymous report is always more difficult.
Right.
It makes the investigation, you know, often, you don't get enough information to really start an investigation, but everything is investigated to the best of its ability. We still encourage people to report to us discreetly so that we can follow up with them with questions, which often helps us. But we investigate every single thing that's reported to the level we can, given the information reported to us.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see, I think, page 38, 39. For professional technical services. I know in previous years, we've gotten a breakdown of legal fees. Would it be possible to get that information?
Sure. You're looking for, well, I don't, when was the last one? Did we sell one out for the 1415 year, Doreen?
Yeah.
And if I can ask, the format that was used the last time, you're thinking of the same format?
Yeah. Yeah, I have it somewhere in all this.
Like an update, like an update for the current year? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, just to kind of get a sense.
Right. So, I think the best way to do that might be, if this makes sense, the, you might have missed this, but we didn't do the quarterly update at the last meeting, which is through December 31st, and we have that on the agenda to do at the next regular board meeting.
The quarterly financial.
Right, the quarterly financial. So, maybe Doreen could go over that at the same time. Does that make sense? Or do you want to do it like next Tuesday? Just a question, which meeting?
It would be helpful to get it before, if it's possible. I mean, I, somewhere in this pile of paper, I do have the one from last year.
Right.
I could show it to Doreen or whoever would like to see.
Put it on the to-do list.
We'll put it on the Q&amp;A document that's being generated.
Thank you. And then, I guess, just, this is in regards, just a general question about maintenance. And that's not in the executive set, right? That's a separate, oh, no, here we go. I'm sorry, page 47.
Everything's in the executive summary, just a question of how much detail.
Yes. Page 46, 47. Just in terms of the maintenance projects, because I know that we have had a big, you know, that there is an increase this year, and I just thought it might be helpful if there's some, and I don't know if Tom Cullen has this or would be able to do it if it's not too much work, but just a sense of the ongoing list of maintenance projects throughout the district, just kind of where we are and, you know, because I know a lot of the times you've said that, you know, Tom will come to you with a whole laundry list of things, and you'll cut it down, but it might be helpful for us just to get a sense of how many more are in the queue. I mean, it doesn't have to be totally specific, but just to get a sense of kind of what's...
How big is the backlog?
Yeah.
Is that what you're trying to get at?
So, yes.
I'm sure Tom, we can come up with a, you know, the next 20 on your list and send it out.
Right, just to kind of see the bigger picture.
Right.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, we can do that. That's what he asked for but didn't make it in here, department.
Tom's wish list, is that what you're going to title it?
It's not a wish list, not a wish list. They're all legitimate.
Yes, they are.
But the buck stops somewhere, and it stopped here. So, yeah, I mean, you know, you think about...
Wait a second. Next question?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Don't let me start on that.
Finish.
2 million square feet.
Can I ask a quick follow-up to that?
Yeah, sure.
Please do.
He couldn't get out of it.
Who had asked a question on this page as well?
Yes, it's also on maintenance, page 47. So, there's roughly a half a million dollar increase. So, I had asked a question about, is this, we had stuff that really needed to get done, and we couldn't wait, so we had to spend a half a million dollars more, or things went up, or, in other words, normally, you try and keep things fairly flat and just fit the, as much of the bucket list into the, you know, into the pot as possible.
So, you have to go, we have to go into a little more detailed pages of what's on there, because that, maintenance services, as you can see down below, it has a lot of items that are included there.
Right.
Right.
So, it's kind of more of a general question.
Yeah, so...
A little more than we anticipated, I guess? I don't know.
Well, no, it's, as I mentioned, we have some of these counts that really have been in need of beefing up, and we've just been holding back on doing them, because the budgets have been so tight. So, there's a number of maintenance services that get included on there. The major maintenance projects are just one of them. Major maintenance projects are going up, I forget what the number is, a couple hundred thousand dollars total, but also, this is where the painting, the plowing, the paving accounts are all going up, because we just can't keep up with the work in those areas. There's just too much need and not enough money to go around.
That's correct. We answered your question, and we'll get you the detail, but the difference in just the projects from last year to this year is, comes to 182,687. So, that's just the difference from the requests last year for maintenance projects and the requests this year. requests this year. So the rest of the increase is all under all the maintenance accounts. There's over 30 of them. So there preventive maintenance would be refuse removal, extermination. When you look at all of those, they go up a little bit, depending on the contract with the town and everything.
So the, so the quick answer is, like you said, it's more across the board?
There's leases in there for the maintenance department, so it's across the board. But I did break out just what the project amount is, and you'll be able to see that.
Yep, that's, that's, I did, okay, thank you.
Okay. Back to Mrs. Gerber.
It's Gerber's time.
Okay, page 11, this could be a really quick answer, under school climate bullying? No, I, the last sentence says funds for an electronic system are in the budget. Is that, is that TIPS? That is.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. And then another question, page 12, under the teacher and administrator evaluation, the last sentence, more of we must administer surveys to parents and teachers as part of this system, which will take time to develop, administer, and analyze, but we have not included additional funds for a survey. So I guess, how, how will that survey get done?
Because it's, two years ago made a decision for budgetary reasons to not spend the approximate $25,000.
Right.
That would cost to have a third party develop a survey for us.
So we're continuing in that direction.
And so, we're continuing with that. And one of the reasons we want to continue with that is that if we give the exact same survey again, then we actually can get comparative data, because we'll get the exact same questions that we asked two years ago, and we can now start to see trends. If we switched to a third-party survey, that would be really hard to make those comparisons. So we want to see some longitudinal data there, and it costs more money. And I have complete confidence that Andrea and her committee can handle it again.
Okay, so we're just staying the course with what we've been doing?
We're staying the course, that's so it doesn't show up as a, as a cost to the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Can I move on to the next person?
May I follow up very quickly with that? I had thought this was a different survey. What you're describing, is that just the school climate survey?
Oh, I'm sorry. The school climate survey is something, I'm sorry, that's correct.
The answer is what, but not for this topic?
Yes, well, the answer is also true for this topic, because Ann does that. And that's the same answer, that we developed our own, and we're using it, and we want to use the same one so we can do comparative analysis on it. So it's, I answered about school climate, but I believe it's also true for the administrator, the parent and teacher survey, and now the student survey that we're doing this year, right?
Yeah, that's different, not online.
Right. Okay. So yes, we basically are, these are homegrown.
Who wishes to, Ms. Pitko?
I just want to say first, I want to thank Dr. Title for having the brown bag luncheon, because being new to this budget process versus my own school district, I learned a lot and had a lot of questions. I also want to thank anybody in the audience who came to the brown bag luncheon. It was nice to see and meet some of the people that are invested in our school district. My question actually, if you turn to page 126, and I'm sorry Andrea, it's directed towards you, if you could come up. Looking at the projected enrollment, I understand how we do pre-K at Burr and Dwight. I'm curious how we project for the ECC.
For the ECC, because it has rolling admissions, and students start with us upon their third birthday all throughout the year, we do a five-year rolling average.
Okay.
So we don't take the highest number in June, but we take the five-year rolling average of the October 1 number.
So, and I have no background information to go with this, but is it possible we'll grow out of the location of the ECC?
You know, we, we question that a lot. We haven't yet, but we're seeing slight increases over the past couple of years, so we're monitoring pretty carefully.
Okay.
Well, one point on that would be that currently we have children with disabilities there, we also have tuition students there. And so if the number of students that were mandated to serve with disabilities grows, and we start to run out of space, then we would simply need to reduce the number of tuition-based students to go, because we can't turn away anybody who's identified on their third birthday. We haven't had to do that, but that's always the, the factor we can consider if we get into a pinch.
So the chair to Dr. Title, how, is there a state law to how many students who receive services to the tuition-paying students? It's pre-K, so I don't know. I know K through 12.
All right, Andrea, I'll take it.
There's no legislation that sets the percentage of students with disabilities versus students without disabilities at the preschool level. The target is to stay at or under the 50/50 range, 50% of students with disabilities and 50% of students without. And that's where you want to be, because you want to bring the models and have models of great play and great language for the kids at the preschool area. That being said, you know, in the absence of additional space, if budgets were such that additional space, that our students with disabilities numbers increased, and we had to tighten up the spaces for children without disabilities, and no other budgetary options were available, that would be discussed here. We would certainly come to the table with a proposal to gain additional space, to meet that, that, it's not a mandate, but to meet that best practice standard, but that would be discussed here and decided by the town.
There's no mandate.
Okay.
There's a possible way to reconfigure some space over there if we had to add another classroom. We talked about that a little bit during our budget review with the staff from ECC. So we think that if we needed to, it would be a tight squeeze, but we think we could add another classroom there without compromising the rest of the students. So we think we got a little more wiggle room there than might be a parent just walking through it.
Well, and having the two preschools that we also have at the other two schools would buy us some options as well. So there's a long way to go before we need to be raising even yellow flags.
It's, yeah, it's not a yellow flag yet.
Right. Okay.
Any further questions on any other topic? Who would like to go next? Mr. Patton?
I just, hopefully like to quickly move back to our favorite topic, health insurance, again, and this new 2.0 program with the state.
And the page number, so that those of us, that you want to ask a question about?
It's more along the lines of, hold on a second. It's more general questions, but the health insurance line is in page 34. So I'm hoping that I think this is simple, and I'm just not understanding how this program works with us, because I have like over half a dozen questions on stuff here that Dr. Title didn't really go over. Under the new plan, are we still self-insured?
No.
That answers half of the questions.
Is that a brief?
So that's why we don't have to worry about IBNRs and all that stuff, because we don't have to worry about that there's money left over, because we're not paying anything.
Correct.
That also is related to, we don't need a stop-loss, stop-loss coverage.
Correct.
Extra insurances, et cetera. And so all those removals of all those things, the Ann consulting fee, all that stuff is all figured into the, the new budget, all those savings.
The new rates include all the elements of the health insurance plan.
Got it. Okay, just to make sure that that was pretty much. And that, again, related to the stop-loss, so that we don't have to worry about, since we don't have these insurances, the state is just going to cover, no matter what the claims are, whether we have, you know, extra, you know, $300,000 claims, half a million dollar claims, or $5 claims, it's just one plan, it's just covered it like...
Where essentially, it's like being fully insured. It's, from our perspective, it's fully insured. We pay X dollars, it goes into the big pool. If there's excess claims, the state merges them in with all the other claims, and because you're smoothing out these big claims and small claims, over 200,000 people instead of 1,400 people.
Right.
It washes them out, in fact, when the state met with us, they don't even carry a stop-loss. It's such a big pool, they don't need it. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. So they don't have it, that's not our problem.
Got it. That's what I was hoping, I was misunderstanding. So, so in relation to, just hopefully maybe this won't be the last time it's brought up, but the excise tax, if, heaven forbid, it triggers in 2020, I don't want to say it's more of this, the state's problem, because it's our problem as an individual municipality, but if we're on a state plan, they're going to, or in theory you'd think that they would be looking at it from a whole state of Connecticut thing, in terms of are we in, you know, have a greater plan than we should.
Right.
Because now we're on the same plan that kind of everybody in the state.
Everybody who's in that, right.
Who are...
Yeah, there's one plan, and we wouldn't be treated any differently under that than anybody else.
Okay. All right. Enough of health insurance.
Before you leave, health insurance, if I could ask a follow-up. Under our contracts, we are allowed to change plans, plan providers, as long as it is quote substantially equivalent. But we took the step of going to each of the unions and asking if they were on board with this, and I wonder, Dr. Title, if you could explain the rationale for taking that step.
Okay, so all of our union contracts, the board has the unilateral authority to implement coverage or a carrier that is deemed to be substantially equivalent. Substantially equivalent is, can be debated. You could have, no two plans are exactly the same. You can have differences in plan design, what's covered, what's not, at what percentage, what the premium, what the co-pays are, what the deductibles are. This plan has this massive wellness plan in it, our current plan doesn't. You're looking at provider networks that are changing, so some doctors are in and some doctors are out, you can have network coverage issues, and you're looking at three different plans. You're looking at medical, prescription, and dental, all of which are obviously slightly different in one way, shape, or form than the current plan. So it's often a debatable point. And while we could unilaterally switch and just say, well, that's tough, if you don't like it, fight it, that's usually not a good strategy, because we're much better off working through any questions a bargaining unit members may have about this, because the recourse that bargaining units have, should we take sort of that hard line and just say, we're doing it tough, the recourse is to file a grievance and say, you know, you've unilaterally acted in contrary to the contract, this is not substantially equivalent. And that would put us into the grievance arbitration process. It would, in addition to running up our legal fees, you run the possibility of losing, and it would take months and months and months for that to play out. So even if you were to win, and you could be possibly fighting seven grievances, since we have seven bargaining units, and if we lost in any one of them, we probably wouldn't want to switch everybody over, because that's a whole nother set of complications. You don't want to leave one group on the self-insured plan, everybody else over, it just wouldn't work. And we would, in any case, even if we won all of them, we wouldn't be able to implement it for 16, 17, because by the time all of that played out through all of the different bargaining units, you know, it would be at least another year. So we would be foregoing all of the savings. So rather than do that, we basically engaged our employees in examining this and saying, hey, this looks like a good deal for everybody, answered all their questions, held a number of meetings, and at the end of the day, we got the word that we're the board to implement this plan, we would not grieve it. And so technically, we didn't have to ask, but we worked on it collaboratively, and as a result, we have an outcome that saves the district $3.5 million. We used very minimal legal services to get this, and the employees were involved in the decision and support it. And as a result, we end up in a really good place as rapidly as possible, instead of ending up in grievance arbitration.
Thank you. You had another topic you want to go to?
Laundry list here, I'm going to, I'll start in order on the income side page. This is more like a general request, that I'm sure folks are working on this already, page 11 to 15 on the state mandates. Is there a way roughly that we could monetize what each mandate costs us in this budget? At least the new ones that are mentioned here?
Um...
Now, I mean, they could do that by next week?
In some cases you can. By monetize, you mean, I think a monetized meeting, like you're a business and you're operating something and you're trying to make a profit on it. So that's not what you mean by monetize, right? You mean attach a cost.
Yeah, attach a cost, the impact of the budget.
Each of these.
You mentioned one earlier.
Yeah, I pointed out one, one area. We'll give it, we'll give it a shot. Some of it is just so hard to really put your hands on, because there's a lot of it is time of existing personnel that's redirected into dealing with the mandate, as opposed to doing something else that might be more productive in the district. So there's an opportunity cost of the time. It doesn't necessarily show up in the budget. And the classic example of this is teacher and administrator evaluation, right? We didn't spend a lot of money developing these systems, because it was done in-house, but, you know, the amount of hours that were put in on this, and the amount of hours our administrators are putting in to conduct these observations with, you know, at the building level, in most cases no additional help, you know, far outweighs the direct costs of this. So we'll, we'll give it a shot, but, you know, in a lot of cases, you just can't follow it through right to the line in the budget. But where we can, we'll, we'll point that out.
Right, I mean, as ballpark as you can, and if it, like you said, if it's, you know, redirecting staff time, then you can just say that, and that, that will be, make perfect sense. Page 22, under income grants. So we, we had a grant for technology for the last two years from the S-BAC assessments. Was there, and this year, we had two years in a row, and then there's, this year there's zero. So I guess my question is, was there a grant to apply for? And if so, did we apply for it, or was there just no grant to ask money for, or we kind of dried out that well?
Well, there was a grant, and we did apply. And I believe we've been approved. However, this grant requires that the State Bond Commission release the money, because the state bonded money for this grant. State Bond Commission seems to be rather uninterested in approving additional bonding projects, this one in particular. And so Nancy and myself have been hounding legislators and whoever to, can we get the bonding commission off the dime? Because once they do, then that will free up some money. We don't know how much, because they can always give you less than you asked for, but we've met all the requirements. And so it could be, you know, next month, it could be never. So at this point, we can't count on it, so we didn't budget for it, so you took it out of the budget. Well, it's not really in the budget in the sense that it would be extra, you know, above and beyond what we've added in here, because you can't supplant with these grants. Supplant meaning you can't just reduce your budget and insert this in as a substitution.
Right, I mean, you're not buying less...
The state doesn't, looks very dimly on that.
iPads for...
Right. So we put in for specific, you know, projects, and that has to stay that way, because it has to be a supplement. And we're just waiting for the state, which is like waiting for Godot.
Follow-up?
Oh, this is an English teacher. Was that the Godot reference?
No, this is not about Godot.
Don't ruin, don't ruin it, because they're going to want to know if Godot actually comes or not.
Before Dr. Title starts talking about Godot any further, another subject?
May I follow up on that, Mr. Driver?
What, Mrs. Godot, or?
No. My question was, you discussed that as a supplement, so what is the program we are now not implementing, because that money has not been freed up?
Okay, so Nancy's going to explain what she put in for in the grant.
What we applied for is sort of a grant supplementing a grant. Back in 2009, there was a grant called ARA, that was the American Reinvestment Actors, and I don't know exactly what the whole, an acronym stood for.
Close your mic.
And we, we bought what we called netbooks, there was pre-tablet kind of mini laptops that allowed us to get them into the hands of special needs kids, but we also made sure that they were available to general ed kids as well. We needed to replace those last year, and we had not enough money to do all of them. So what we ended up with was a cart of 15 units at the elementary schools, and similarly at the secondary schools. And so what we wanted to do was get that to a classroom set. So the, I think if I remember off the top of my head, it was around $225,000 worth of additional tablets and laptop carts to tote those cart, those laptops around that we applied for. And as Dr. Title said, we applied, we did everything we needed to do, and we've just been waiting.
Thank you.
And why don't you ask one more question, we'll move on to another board member.
Any, any, mo, any, mo. Do something interesting here. Page 37, line 307, other services. And again, you could provide this, or someone can provide this later if needed. You discussed that we were adding due to the...
I think you mean page 39. I think you had a typo in your questions.
Oh, that could very well be. That could very well be. You are correct. It's page 39, sorry. Dr. Hall, you talked about that, you know, one of the things that we're increasing in the, in the, due to the long-range plan is extracurricular activities, I think at the middle school.
Yes.
Is there anything in there? I didn't see it, where we had any kind of inkling of what those things might be, or we're, that's still on the drawing board?
That's still under discussion with the middle school principals, but it's basically clubs and activities, and each school's different. They may have different needs, different programs, because it's largely faculty-driven. You know, teachers want to offer a certain program, and we're not able to do it because we don't have the funding for it. So it varies depending on which middle school and what the interests are, both of the students and the staff. You know, we're making somewhat of a deal about this, but this is about a $15,000 item. All right, so we're not talking about tripling, you know, the offerings here. This is a step in the right direction. But that will be, each school would determine that themselves.
And that would...
Well, there's no determination made because right now, it's a proposal. I mean, it may never happen. So wait till the budget's approved, and then we can have a conversation about what we're going to do with that. Okay, I guess that's it for now.
Follow up?
You know, I think you're double dipping on this.
I'm, I'm working this hard. But that was also one of my questions as well, so thank you, Mr. Patton, for covering it. But through the chair to Dr. Title, I don't want to put a staff member on alert, but this was something I was very intrigued by and very happy about. If there happened to be any middle school administrators here who might speak to areas of interest, I was wondering if you might be willing to call on said person?
I see said person out there, so...
Actually, she's actually coming forward of her own volition.
Well, she has little choice. She's the only middle school principal here. So this is Sally Banina. She's the principal at Tomlinson.
Good evening, everyone. As was stated by Dr. Title...
Again, speak closer to the mic for the TV audience.
As was stated by Dr. Title, each of us has separate wants and needs, all right? I can speak for our school, you know, for Tomlinson and at Tomlinson. There's been a very big demand for more homework club activities. We have a homework club. The present number that we have is overwhelming, so we do not have enough staff to service the children, all right? We have one idea that the children would really love to do is, they'd love to have a chess club. That's something that we haven't had money for. We have a very large cross-country group, and we need more help with that group. So those are just three possibilities that we are looking at at Tomlinson. And I know that both Meg Tyley and Gary Rosato have needs similar to ours with the cross-country, but different from ours in the other areas.
Thank you.
Okay.
Who wishes to go next? Ms. Carnell?
In terms of the advanced placement, it looks like, you know, we're trending up in terms of the enrollment. But I'm trying to understand that I believe it's a four-plus is where they get credit at school, at university. And again, it looks like the enrollment, but how many students are actually taking the test and getting the credits? So maybe for next time, we can get a bit of a breakdown on this graph.
I know it's an individual decision by, by the colleges as to what the cutoff is for, for credit. But I think we have provided in the past the breakdown of three and higher and four and higher. In fact, we put in the district improvement plan as a baseline, percentage of kids three and higher and percentage of kids four and higher as a target. But this graph, this is what the basis is for the AP honor roll. And to be honest with you, while obviously both are important, when you're expanding AP to students that are on the edge of, do I take an AP or not, all right? And we have faculty and the administration are encouraging these students to reach hard to get into an AP. If that, if those students who are right on the edge, you know, if they get a three, that's a success story. Because otherwise, they wouldn't be taking it at all. So, you know, as you increase your numbers, having new kids taking the test or taking additional tests, if at the first run, they just, they get a three, you know, it's hardly a concern. It's actually, well, you know, that's a bonus, so. And that's going to, that's going to happen. So I think that's why the AP uses that as the, as the cutoff. But I think in terms of credit, I think that varies. But I'm looking out at high school people to see if they want to lend any more clarity to this. No. Or it's a long way from the back of the room.
I know, I will only say that for my two students, my two children, they...
Was that in the study? No. I had to change, I guess.
They, they got credit for the threes that they had. Both of them walked into colleges with, one at NYU, one at University of Richmond, with, I think, 10 to 12 credits. It didn't stop them from taking more credits and still having to pay the tuition bill, but, but they did. And so I would think that the guidance counselors might be able to give an anecdotal answer to that, but I'm not sure that we have the capability to be able to survey all of the colleges and know what their individual policies would be.
No, and I appreciate that. All kidding aside, and I know approximately how old your children are, I think it has changed, and I think the universities and colleges have gotten much stricter about accepting this credit. That's why. And maybe you can explain, if, if a student takes an AP class, does not take the exam or, or does take the exam and gets a three, and I agree, Dr. Title, it's great that these students are being pushed because I think that's wonderful, but how is it weighted on their transcript to the colleges or universities?
I'm not sure you mean, what do you mean by weighted, I guess?
So you're, what you were saying is if a student is on the cusp and they're encouraged to take the AP class...
Right. Right. They take the AP class, so they get, in the weighted system, they're taking a harder class, so they get a benefit in terms of their class rank based on the grade they get in the class. But the AP score has nothing to do with it. Is that correct? They're nodding, yes. So the score on the AP doesn't affect their class rank. The class rank is a GPA calculation.
We don't have class rank. Does it impact their GPA?
Impact their GPA, I'm sorry. So GP, what Mr. Abling was saying is that the GPA is based on the grades, and the grades are given a higher weight if you take a harder class. So they get the benefit of that, absolutely.
That's what I always ask.
Yeah, so there's a benefit. I think it's, you know, the reason that we're pushing this, and this is not the only way to push kids, obviously, is not so much to get them credit so they can go in as sophomores in college and so on and so forth, but really is to push kids who we think are, are capable of doing higher-level coursework and encouraging them to get in there and then giving them the support they need to be successful. We don't want to encourage somebody to go in and then have them experience failure. So as we've gotten more and more kids in, we're still maintaining, you know, some nice numbers. And that's why the AP district honor roll has named us to it for three years in a row.
Other questions, Ms. Carnell?
I just want to follow up. Is there a need for more staff, teachers, in terms of, as the AP classes are offered and enrollment goes up?
So we, we have in the budget some additional staff for, both in the academic area and the non-academic area. Some of it's in social studies where we think we are going to roll out some new higher-level classes when the new curriculum comes in. Some are in the non-academic areas. But we always move staff around based on student need, so they may be in the budget, say, for, say, social studies. But suppose you have a lot of kids that unexpectedly take an AP class in another area, we may shift that position over to fill it if we don't need it in social studies. So we always wait until the student, student course selections come in, and then the, the curriculum leaders have a chance to analyze who's signed up for what courses and what we need for teaching load, and then they negotiate with me as to how many they actually get in each area. So, you know, if we have, say, we thought 18 kids were going to take AP psychology. We have more than that, but just pick a number, but we only had 36, we're going to offer two sections of that, and we'll, we'll make sure there's a staff for it.
Ms. Lou McCormick wanted to follow up on that topic?
Yeah. So related to the four, four-plus, I think it is a reality that most schools now seem to require fours and some even fives, which is, you know, so difficult. And I guess in this type of model, which I think is commendable that we try to get more kids to take these classes, I guess it would be comforting to see that while doing this, we were also able to preserve or increase the numbers of fours and fives that we are seeing from the students. So maybe better to reflect than a percentage of students receiving fours and fives, it's just the absolute numbers. You know, have we been able to sustain or increase the, the performance of students receiving fours and fives while also adding threes to the bucket versus having a downward shift to more fours and threes and a declining shift from fives? So I think that's what the numbers might tell us and confirm that we are actually, you know, really making it happen for all the kids.
Ms. Gerber wants to make a comment on this topic.
Just one thing to keep in...
Wait a second. Ms. Carnell?
Is that all right? Yes, sorry. Thank you. Just through the chair to Dr. Title, this page, number 10 here, the advanced placement results and the graph that you have here, for the third year in a row, Fairfield was included in the College Board AP district honor roll for these results. The AP district honor roll, they, they use three plus.
Correct.
Correct. So that is why you have this in here.
Correct.
Because it is based directly on the AP honor roll, which we have gotten as a district for the past three years. So that's why you have it laid out this way, because that is how the AP gives the award or gives the recognition, correct?
That's why we have it this way. It's also consistent with previous years, so people can go back and do comparisons. So we have 10 years of data in here that show...
Right. And we also do get, we did get AP scores broken down.
Right.
We had the link provided to the board where we could look at every single AP exam taken by every single student at both of our high schools. So if we really wanted to go into the minutia of that, we'd be able to do that. But for this one page in the budget, this is noteworthy because of the AP honor roll.
Right.
But we have received the information. As a percentage, as a percentage, though.
No, we received the information of the test scores. Yes, we did.
And, and this is a budget meeting, so let us move on to other budget questions?
I think I'm finished because a lot of the questions I had have already been answered.
Okay. Who wishes to go next for their segment of time? Mrs. Lou McCormick?
Sure. Let's see, so if I go to the main page, page 31, I guess my first question relates to transportation. And transportation looks like it is up by, what, is that 173? The .11 didn't seem like a huge increase, except when I turned to page, where is transportation? Page 41, which is item 317. And I look at the detail, and it occurs to me that we have a slight decrease in the population of our student body, and we have seen a huge decrease in the price of fuel. So, you know, this would have been the year that I would have expected to see a flat transportation or even possibly a declining transportation number in a year like this. However, I see that inside the detail, it says that there was a 2.5% increase in contractual rates, increases in outsourced transportation, magnet school, a whole list, special ed transportation aids. So that must have been, I'm just wondering, if we hadn't had that decrease in fuel rates and we hadn't had the decrease in student population, how much of an increase would our transportation number have been? Because it seems like the decrease in the fuel costs were so significant. I mean, it's a huge benefit. It's making inflation negative across the country, so I am surprised that we are seeing an increase.
So the, the increase in that line, if you go back to page 31, the increase in that line, it's alone, is that second column in from the right, 2.21%.
Yeah.
The .11 is, what does that increase reflect as part of our overall budget? Of the 2.59, what fraction is it? So that line's going up about 2.2%. We do not anticipate, the way the students are breaking down in terms of the numbers, that we're able to reduce any regular ed buses. So while student population's been declining at the elementary level, it's also been growing at the middle school level, it's peaking at the high school level. So the net effect is we need to run the same number of buses that we've run every year. The contract has a 2.5% cost escalator in it, so right off the top of the bat, that account's going to go up 2.5%. And the number of buses has been the same on the regular ed side. We have seen an uptick in some of the special education transportation that we have needed to provide depending on individual student needs. So we have some additional, I think it's an additional wheelchair bus has to be budgeted for next year. Maybe Andrea can speak to this. As well as, this account pays for bus aids for students that need an aid on the bus to make it safely to school in an outplacement.
The other piece that's included in the special education transportation is the requirement to transport students who are identified as homeless under McKinney-Vento. So at any point during the year, we might have a family who comes to meet with me in that role that I play, and we transport, as we are required to do under McKinney-Vento, that student from wherever they are living. If they're in a shelter, if they're living in with another family, that could be out of town, it could be anywhere. And if the parent chooses to remain in the school district, they are eligible to do so, and we must transport them. We often split that cost with the school district in which they're living, but that's a whole nother negotiation process we are, we are required to maintain. So some of those things that get lumped into special education are not just outplaced kids by us, but we have McKinney-Vento responsibilities as well. And that can be, that's what, some of that private transportation where Mr. Ficki might seek out some other form of transportation other than for a student and a bus.
Other questions?
Yes, so, so I'll go back. Is it possible to understand what the benefit of that .56 per gallon savings was?
It's about $100,000.
So it's only about $100,000?
We use about 200,000 gallons of fuel a year, so $112,000.
Okay. All right, that's helpful. And of the, so most of it is coming from the 2.5% increase in contract rates?
Yes.
Okay. And is that part of that four-year or five-year contract?
Yeah. That contract has a built-in 2.5% each year. It's actually better, the previous contract had three, so town got a better deal on this one. So we'll have one more year, and at that point, that contract will get bid. Full bidding process, and whatever happens, happens. But it's going to be 2.5 for 16, 17, it'll be 2.5 for 17, 18, and then there'll be a new contract in place.
And as a consideration for future budgets, have we ever considered retaining a transportation consultant to see if we can more efficiently do our transportation? Because it still is something that you can't help but notice, certain buses running almost empty frequently and certain buses extremely full. So I'm not sure if we are, if we're doing as much as maybe we could if we had an expert in there analyzing the situation for us. Not clearly for this budget, but something to consider. I don't know how much it costs. I know there are a few really top-notch consultants in the field in the country. But would it be worth it since it's such a significant part of our budget?
We've actually done that a couple times. I know we did it when we went out to bid, when the contract was bid the last, like two or three years ago. We had a very well-regarded consultant examine that. Hate to even mention this word because I get a bad reaction when I say it, but this was looked... but this was looked at in the operational audit, and they determined that our total spending on transportation was right in line with what you'd expect for the student population this size. I think Mr. Fickie does an outstanding job of doing the best he can with the routes. That being said, we are upgrading our bus software, that was one of the recommendations from the consultant, to software that will do better computerized routing. And we're hoping that, if we can get that in place, that we may see some benefit, you know, to that. So, that was really the big outcome from the consultant, was upgrade your bus software. And that's being provided to us July one.
Okay.
So, we're actively on it. You know, this is an area, to be honest with you, that as far as I'm concerned, any dollar I can spend in transportation is a dollar that can go somewhere else. So, I have no incentive to keep this number higher than, any more than it has to be. I'm very reluctant to put any increase in here unless we absolutely have to have it, because this is just, you know, an operational cost, and every single school district has the same problem with high school buses. Been around the block on this how many times? And you have to run them, and they don't have that many kids in them, and, or they're running all over town, because we have two high schools in a big town. But we continue to look at it, I will tell you that.
Yeah.
It's not something we're ignoring.
No, I think that's good. And in terms of the software, just as a suggestion to consider, I think I mentioned this before, some software that might allow us to have families opt out of busing transport. A lot of people drive their kids or have after-school activities that they go to. So, even though we feel the need to provide, a lot of people may not need to take the service. So, anyways, just a thought on that topic.
Yeah, and feel the need, it's a state requirement. It's not that we feel the need to provide transportation, it's a state requirement.
Well, it's a state requirement, but families can waive the availability. It is, like, if you look, read the state mandate, it's when, if reasonable, and it's needed. So, I think there is some leeway that, how we determine how many seats we need to make available if people waive the need to take the bus, they can do so. Let's see. AP exam, I think a lot of stuff has been covered. Oh, yeah, I was going to say, as a, you know, I did notice throughout this, we've had, of the increases that we've seen throughout the book, I know that there's a lot of the special education mandates that have been raised by the state, kind of as Mr. Patton had raised. It would be nice to see that as a breakout. But I think even nicer would be to understand kind of the full impact of the mandates within the budget. I see that we have broken out our budget in terms of, on page thirty, we have it broken out by kind of topic. But I think it might be also interesting, because it is such a significant part of our budget, to understand the trend that the state mandates have had an impact on our local budget. Because I think this is something that maybe has, is being seen across many districts, perhaps in the state, perhaps across the country. And I think it would be nice to understand how it is within Fairfield. I don't think we've ever really seen it laid out on a single page, kind of how the trend has evolved over time. And I think that that would be helpful to understand the allocation of resources to this area, which is so important and mandated by the state, including the amount that we actually get rebated. I don't know, rebate's not the right word, back from the state at the end of the day. So, we can understand where things are headed in the future. Because from a risk management perspective, if this area continues to grow from a mandate perspective, this is a very real thing that we have to prepare for. So, if that's possible, I think that would be very much appreciated, I guess, next week.
I'm not necessarily clear on what the request is, so-
A breakdown.
The impact, I know, Mr. Patton asked about the impact on the mandates, and could we identify where in the budget these occur? So, we'll do our best for that, even though that's a little shaky.
I would refer-
Wasn't sure what the other-
So, like, what the total percentage of special education spending is within our budget?
So, if you look on page one-twenty-three. This is a new page. That is not perfect, but the staff went through considerable effort to try and put a page in here that says, "How much do we spend on programs?" And so, if you look on line twelve-hundred, "Special Education," that gives you, here's what we spend in total on special education. You might want to be in touch with Dr. Tidal to give him a little bit more guidance as to what you're looking for.
Well, I think within, like, if you look at any of the, like, on the state website, when they say strategic profiles of districts, they'll allocate a certain percentage of the budget to special education. And I think kind of typical is twenty percent of a budget or something in that neighborhood goes to special education. So, it would be interesting to understand where Fairfield is on that spectrum and how that's moved over time. Clearly, how much of the new increase to our budget comes from that space, as well as the other special services that we offer, like, to the English language learners. I think the ELL group also, how much of the budget do we actually allocate to that to benefit them? As well as the gifted population, how much of the budget do we actually allocate to them? Those are not necessarily mandated areas, unlike the special education space, which is why the special education space is, I think, so relevant from a risk management perspective, because we have less discretion over funding it. So, it would be, I think, beneficial to us and, I think, the public, the community, to understand kind of how our funds are moving over time and to what purpose.
Do you have another question that you want to ask on another topic?
I just answered.
And then we can move ahead.
Yeah.
Just follow up, yeah.
Do you mind if Ms. Calabria has a follow-up?
Quick calculation, we're using about twelve percent.
Mrs. Lou McCormick, do you mind if he takes some time to do a follow-up on this topic?
Well, I'd rather just get the formal number from them. I've done quick calculations also, but let's just-
So, please, continue.
Across the whole special, because on average, I've seen it as around twenty percent for other districts. If we're twelve percent, great, or not great.
Right, the budget numbers here, and, you know, doing the calculation, it comes out to twelve percent. So, we're on, if you're basing it on twenty percent, what everybody else is doing, then we're spending less than we should be. So, we should increase that.
I'd like, I'm not saying whether we should increase or decrease. I want to understand what our trend has been over time, of what the state man, how they've impacted. Because clearly, the mandates have increased over time, and so what has the trend been? I know, were we at five percent before, and now we're at twelve percent? How quickly has it been growing? And even if the trend has been five percent per year, then that's something that we have to budget for going forward. I think it's probably a relevant risk management exercise.
Your next question?
Okay. All right, my, I guess the last one I want to touch on is the instructional services. Let's see, I want to say that it's on page thirty-seven. See if I have that right.
Yes. Page thirty-seven?
Yeah. Okay, yeah. So, page thirty-seven, instructional services. Right, so, when I looked at the instructional services headline, it looked like it was at about two-point-six million. But when I broke it down and looked at, you know, how it was laid out, you know, when I look at the instructional services, it actually is only a quarter of a million dollars. And other things are thrown into instructional services, like the people personnel services, which is a significant part of the instructional services, as well as the student activity expenses. But of the instructional services, really only a quarter of a million of our entire budget goes to instruction, instructional services, which is, what, for assessments and curriculum development? And kind of, it seems like the core of what I would say, I would consider some of the priorities of our district. So, again, when looking at kind of the big picture, I would, I would like to see that grow. I saw our textbook line grow tremendously this year, and I actually think that's wonderful. I think that is exactly where we should be spending our money, and the fact that we're going to spend on math textbooks and on social studies textbooks. I wish we were buying new science textbooks this year, rather than waiting for another year. But, you know, I guess when I look back at the professional development on page, where is it? On page one-hundred-and-fifty? You know, professional development to me, along with textbooks and curriculum development, have to be, to me, some of the most important spending items for students and student learning and student achievement that we can put our budget towards. And the numbers just look so light to me. And maybe they're heavier than they have been in prior years, and I love the fact that you broke them all out. But, you know, when I just look at the core, specific area, professional development, it only adds up to sixty-four thousand dollars in total for the entire district.
That's not correct.
Okay, so maybe this is fully reflective of, you know-
Where are you getting that number from?
That's on page one-fifty. I was looking at the professional development and just looking down the line, excluding the professional development that is leadership training. So, I'm excluding the leadership training, I'm just looking at content and, you know, just the areas of study themselves. So, when I just add it up-
Professional development of one-hundred-and-five thousand is really important, and that is professional development, and it covers a lot of different areas. So, I think that's important, and it might, remember, because it doesn't quite say it this way, but remember I pointed out that line in the special education budget, that's conferences-staff development? That's a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, and that's gone up substantially. So, if you add all those buckets together, we get a pretty healthy number. And this is something that comes directly from curriculum leaders and from the directors, and it's not something we skimp on. So, there is quite an emphasis on professional development. There's definitely, you know, increases going on, and a lot of areas are directly impacting, as you mentioned, the textbook line. But the instructional services line is a bit of a misnomer, because it, you know, you can see what's-
Right.
Right.
Right, when you look at it, really only a quarter of a million dollars of the whole budget is allocated towards-
Right, and that's, so that's a little bit misleading. And I also will tell you that, you know, you could see, you know, very large numbers in terms of curriculum development. I'll say that curriculum development is also a form of staff development, because as teachers are working on upgrading the curriculum, they're doing the latest research on the latest standards, they're looking at ways of instruction that can be improved upon. So, it's not, you know, curriculum development often bleeds over into professional development. It's not, you know, necessarily just a standalone where this writing curriculum guides. So, it's a, it's a mixed bag there, but we feel we have in there is sufficient. And we've obviously increased a tremendous number of line items to improve in the textbook area, and that was really the priority.
Right.
It's almost a million-dollar bump.
I think, I think that's fabulous, to be honest. Like, I would be thrilled if we would reallocate more money towards this page. This page, to me, is the heart of what I think public schools are all about and what makes us truly excellent, and also the assessments. I think the assessments with the curriculum, with the professional development and the text and materials, this is the heart. And if I add up all these numbers, I would love to see this grow. I would love to see this grow five times, seven times, and find ways to cut from other areas of the budget and reallocate them to this page, because, again, this is the heart of what goes on in the classroom to me. And I'm thrilled that you've laid this out, because I think this is really important and maybe an area that I hope going forward will look to grow, both in the curriculum, the professional development, and text and materials. I mean, this is a huge first step that we've started investing in the texts, and I hope this carries over. Because I understand we do wonderful professional development within district, but I also know that this is a very global world, and it would be wonderful to have professional development from external sources as well, maybe even international sources from global leaders in particular disciplines. So, that's my final comment. I would, you know, I think this is a great start. I would love to see the budget on this page allocation grow, and I'd love to see transportation shrink.
Okay, thank you. I know that we have two other board members who have not yet asked questions, and if the two would mind if I went to the public and then came back to you? We don't have too many members of the public here, and so it may not take as long as I might have allocated.
That's fine.
Or do you anticipate any additional questions? I know that you had a separate meeting with Dr. Tidal. Mr. Llewellyn, do you anticipate some questions?
I do.
Yes, so do you mind if I go to the public?
By all means.
So, out to the public. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board on any comments that they have on the two-thousand-sixteen-seventeen budget. The same rules apply. Please come forward and state your name and address, and tell us what you want to know in three minutes or less. Please state your name and address.
Suzanne Misco, one-twenty-three Rygate Road. It's really a pleasure to be sitting in front of you, not having to discuss the health insurance numbers. So, kudos for that. I was anticipating a much higher budget, and it was a great pleasure to see it be more in perspective. I also appreciate the discussion on the process regarding how this all kind of worked with the unions. It was rather confusing, as this didn't seem to be the same process we've seen happen before. And I was just concerned that there might be the option that it could be perceived that contracts were being reopened, but obviously, that's not what has taken place. I was surprised, I really thought there would be an executive meeting of the board before the discussion took place, but I'm sure that legal has provided you all with what you needed on that. On the math textbooks, I will disagree. I feel if we're going to buy math textbooks at the elementary level, I would like to see a curriculum review of the math program. Before we venture in buying a textbook, we need to, I'd like to see us relook at how that curriculum is working. The other piece that I think is very important, and it only seems to come to light so much, at least for me, during the budget season, is in the special education department. These, this area, to me, we have a lot of students involved. I would like to be able to appreciate as a member of the public, or someone who does not have a child in this program, what these programs are. I don't know the community partnership. I see the increase in, you know, that has taken place over the last couple of years. It would be helpful for members of the public and other parents to appreciate some of these programs, and not just at budget time, but maybe an opportunity for some sort of discussion on the curriculum requirements, needs of the special education program. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to come forward? Seeing nobody come forward, we'll back to the board for a wrap-up conversation. Mr. Llewellyn?
Thank you very much. I guess first off, to follow up on Mrs. Gerber's request for the legal breakdown, if we could please add to the right of the historical column for what the budget is, so we can kind of map where it's been and to where it's going, so that if there's actually an increase, we can kind of see where those increases are and which categories, that'd be great. Does that make sense?
So, you want to see the historical breakout by the categories, is that what you're saying?
Ms. Gerber asked for historical spending for-
She asked for an update for the current year on legal.
Update?
Through December thirty-first.
Six-month run.
By one to December thirty-one, because you received the one for the prior fiscal year already. So, that's what I heard. Is that correct?
Yeah, I have the older one.
The old one's been out there, so she asked for an update.
I've got that, too. That's fine. So, if we could put that versus where we are in budget and what the new budget is next to that as well, please, so we can get perspective on the trend, please. One of the questions I had that I didn't see in the book is the food service budget. And I know last time, you know, we subcontracted this out, but I know there was a discussion several months back about where, you know, what would be the renewal? Would there be a guaranteed profit? Would there not be a guaranteed profit? And the basic status of that. So, I guess, do we expect there to be any impact at all in this budget from food service?
No.
No. And could we please get a copy of that budget, or sorry, that latest contract that was ultimately executed?
We have a copy of the food service contract.
Perfect, thank you.
I don't think it's changed since you saw it last time.
That's been distributed, I don't think it's changed since last time.
We never got an executed one. We don't know what the final outcome of it was, because it was being held up by the state because of changes in funding back last time it was discussed. because of changes in funding back last time it was discussed.
That would be for next year.
That's for the current year. We entered this current fiscal year.
The current year, we're fine with the existing contract. It's a question with the state as to whether we have to go back out to bid for next year or not. The current year one hasn't changed from the one you saw before. The holdup was, would they let us stay with the current one? And the answer is yes, for this year.
So we stayed with the current one with the exact same terms, with a guaranteed profit of 100 and...
Doreen, you want to talk about this? There's no impact on the operating budget.
Well, it does if we have a guaranteed profit, though, possibly.
Because that money goes into the food service.
It doesn't flow into our operating budget. It stays with the food service, the profit.
Understood, but let's understand the size of it.
We have a one-year amendment for this year, which is a guaranteed profit of 148, something like that.
Okay, so it went down slightly?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. If we could just get a copy of that as a board, that'd be great.
Copy of the amendment.
Correct, thank you.
Thank you.
Because, okay. Page 33, wage reserves. Which units do we currently have, which bargaining units are currently, you know, active in discussions or have not recently been?
Every, every non-certified bargaining unit's contract is either past due or will be expired by the end of June of '16.
Non-certified.
Non-certified. The teachers and administrators are set for two more years.
Right.
There is only one non-certified union that are currently in negotiations, and then the other four are scheduled to start springtime, give or take. So they're not currently, but they will be before the, this fiscal year is over.
And those four plus one, what percent of the total employees does that represent approximately?
It's all the non-certified.
About a third.
Third.
Okay.
So the entire potential increase in there has to go in the wage and benefit reserve.
Yeah, no, absolutely, and I see the big increase. That's why I was curious.
That's why there's a big increase.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Thank you. Page 37, please. So in page 37, and 301, we have instructional service. The increase in the program assessment is due to a shift in the expense for the STAR mathematics and language arts assessments, K to eight. Does this mean I Ready is no longer with the district?
At the end of this year, we're switching over to STAR for math and language arts.
Okay, and have we done, STAR is in place now for language arts?
Yes, it is.
And have we done STAR mathematics?
No, we've not done STAR mathematics. We're switching over to it next year.
Okay, I guess my concern here is, we'll, we will not have consecutive years of the same assessment, like, five or six years for our elementary. We're also being asked in this book to allocate funds for a math textbook, yet we have no idea how we've done for the last six years, five years. I'm using generalizations, so please correct me with the number of years.
The, the STAR and the language arts assessments, first of all, the reason there's an increase in here is not so much that there's new money involved, but we're moving it. It used to be in the technology budget, and it's been moved out. So we're already paying for assessments. We're just changing the, the math one. So I guess I'll ask somebody from curriculum department to talk about why we're making the move from I Ready to STAR, and how that will help us. I don't know who wants to do that.
Just briefly, last year, we spent, many of us from the curriculum department, as well as the school, spent, I don't know how many hours, looking at the options for assessments. And there were many available to us. We agreed that the two top choices were STAR and I Ready. And we debated whether to use one or both, and we ended up deciding to go with I Ready for math and STAR for reading. Right after that, STAR came out on the state's preferred assessment list, and STAR offered a rather nice package for, for reading and math, but we had already committed to I Ready for math. So we had kind of in the back of our minds that we would kind of follow it this year to see whether it'd be worth our while to move over to STAR. And I think there's a couple reasons why we decided to do that. One significant reason is the amount of time it takes to give the assessment. Do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, because right now, when we, the students take the I Ready assessment, it takes about an hour or a little over an hour. And we really view instruction as one of our, one of the things that we really want to control and want to provide, so we can maximize the amount of learning in our classroom. When we go to the STAR, it actually goes down to about 15 minutes. And we can get about the same type of data in that smaller amount of time, thus then protecting the instruction that goes on in the classroom. In terms of also, the fixed, the fixed price that we, that was provided for STAR that we had to pay for this year was, was math and language arts combined, was part of the same price. And we felt that we can get that same amount through, for the STAR assessment, then we, then paying for two assessments, we can get the same thing for one.
And so, how many times a year are the kids actually assessed, using I Ready or STAR?
It would be three times a year.
It would be three times a year. So we're already paying for STAR?
Yes.
For the math?
Mm-hmm.
So we could implement that this year at no cost to the district, and then have a little bit of overlap and continuity, because, you know, my fear is, you know, here we sit going into our fifth or sixth year, and we have absolutely no comparable data year over year for our elementary math. So we've got kids who are moving into the middle school, who have come through our math program, which was in-house developed without a textbook. We don't know how they're performing.
Well, I don't think I agree with that statement, but let me just say one thing. One reason why we thought it was important to stay with I Ready was that teachers have made their evaluation goals based on I Ready. And we thought it was very important for the integrity of that process not to change, not to change for teachers how we were assessing students, because they wrote their goals based, the math teachers wrote their goals based on I Ready. The reason I don't agree with that statement is both I Ready and STAR are aligned to the common core. Our curriculum is aligned to the common core. So we feel very confident. We would not be switching to STAR if we thought there was going to be a disruption in monitoring results in math. We feel confident that we will be able to still do that, because both assessments have a common alignment to the common core standards.
But what we lose is our ability to understand whether or not we're increasing or decreasing versus the prior year. Are we, are our kids growing or are they not growing? Because, you know, we have I Ready data now that, my understanding, was adjusted kind of for Fairfield's curriculum versus using the national. Does STAR give us a national benchmark as well, do you know?
It'll give us the same amount of information, because a lot of times it is, it is linked back to the SBA assessment. And that is really our common linkage. I mean, we, we look back very, very carefully at looking at how well did the, did the data that we got back from I Ready align to the SBA, the Smarter Balance Assessment? So to me, to say that we have no, the kind of continuity, we still look back and look at the data and see how aligned in terms of how our students are achieving on that, that assessment, and that helps us determine over, over time, how well, for those couple of years, in terms of, especially because we've changed over very recently, with, to be able to look at and judge our, our curriculum over time.
We're using these as formative assessments to help us determine and predict how well students are going to do on the SBA, and what support we need to give them as they prepare for it. So we did an alignment, we, Paul and Walter worked on an alignment of the I Ready scores to SBA, and they will, they can do the very same thing for STAR. It's a correlation. They can do the same thing they did for I Ready.
I understand. An answer that Dr. Tittle gave earlier on another topic was that it's very important to have comparative data year over year. So I have a concern if we're moving from program to program. And now that I hear that this program's actually already paid for, for the existing year, and it's only 15 minutes, might not be bad to at least start to assemble that comparative data.
And that's something that we have discussed in terms of how to do that, but also the key thing is, as Meg discussed, that we still have students being able to, they have to take the three times a year for teacher goals. So now we don't want to start now adding more tests on top of, losing more instructional time when we looked at now to add now on top of a spring I Ready test now to add a STAR assessment. So I mean, that again, we're taking more time out of instruction.
Because we also have our district improvement plan tied to it, but thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Before they leave, can I ask a add-on question?
Mr. Llewellyn, did you say yes?
I said sure.
Mrs. Loomacormick.
Just a quick question. You know, I took a lot of time looking at that I Ready, and I finally got comfortable with what it was telling, and I actually really liked all the detail that it offered. And when I looked at the STAR report, I kind of felt like I wasn't sure what it was telling me by the number. And I'm not even sure that the staff was clear, because it was such a short test. It was like a snapshot in time. Kid had a good 15 minutes or a bad 15 minutes versus the I Ready, which was actually really kind of telling you what they knew or what they didn't, and if they did well or not, what areas within that caused the number to be good or bad. Because they could have been done fabulous in five areas, but one or two areas, weak. And that is very good information, because you can focus each student on where their needs are. So I'm concerned, moving to STAR now, where there was more opaqueness on what the results were actually telling us, will we be able to give students the same kind of feedback and give teachers the same kind of transparency as to what each kid really needs?
Do you have other questions, Mr. Llewellyn?
Please finish.
I mean, to me, I mean, the amount of time can work both ways. When you, when you do an hour test, I mean, the, I think the stamina a student has for that test after a certain amount of time decreases. So I mean, it works both ways. Where sometimes a short assessment, where that, the stamina of a student can actually maintain that and actually provide more reliable data. So that's why I wouldn't say one is right now, because one is longer, it is better, and one is shorter, it is, it is less better. I would say, I would actually, I would probably disagree with that. But in terms of, it is just another snapshot. It is, it is another piece of data that the teacher uses based off of what they see in the classroom. I mean, it's not just a standalone, that's, that's the only data point we're looking at. We use a lot of other data points in terms of all the various, in terms of the teacher assessments and other aspects to help judge how well a student is learning, not just on that one snapshot in time.
Mr. Llewellyn. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
Hold on, may I ask one more question?
Sure.
I'm sorry, just one quick follow-up to Mrs. Loomacormick, if I may just...
Mr. Llewellyn, something?
We're discussing the math curriculum in April.
It's Mr. Llewellyn's time, so it's up to him.
Right, but since this has been brought up, I can see this being a question, but to Mrs. Loomacormick's point, the point being, both tests break out and give you the strand information that you need.
Mm-hmm.
Because I know that's where the SBA has not been as helpful as, or as forthcoming with information as we wanted, but in that 15 minutes, so you're knowing if fractions, if the, the instruction is achieving its goal of students being, getting better at frac, I give that just as one specific example, and you're getting the strand information with both tests.
Yes, we feel confident in the information we're getting from both tests, yes.
Mr. Llewellyn. Thank you, sure. No problem. Page 45, textbooks references further back, page, I guess it's 96 or 97, where the textbooks are break, excuse me, it's page 96, where the textbooks are broken down further. We see, you know, expec, proposed expenditures for, you know, the math, the language arts, social sciences. By approving this budget, are we implicitly approving the textbook? Or are each of the textbooks still going to come before the board for...
No, you know, this is, this is a budget exercise, so...
I'm just making sure.
Yeah, the, so this allows us to, if we find a textbook that we want to recommend, there's actually money to pay for it, should the board approve it.
Right.
So that's all. This doesn't have anything to do with it, because we're not giving you a specific textbook. Well, we've given you an estimate of the cost of a textbook based on the sort of typical cost of books. But the process to select the book and recommend it to you is ongoing.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Just making sure. Page, actually, the prior page, the prior several pages, the section, which is also referenced in summary on page 45, called instructional supplies and materials. It's about a million nine forty-two proposed.
Line number 401.
Line number 401, yeah, sorry. It's up $900,000 versus the prior, and the support for that is starting back in like the low 90s and going through 95 or 96. About 25% of that budget is into a category called general and office. What is that specifically? The others are all broken down by art, reading, English, world language, healthcare, but about 25% of that whole budget is into a general and office.
Where are you, what page are you on?
Pages 90, basically, I think it starts on 80, where does it start? Nope, sorry. It starts on...
You're saying you've added the various pages together on that line item?
So each school's line, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Right, so each school gets an allocation, and they put a certain amount of it into general supplies, which could be classroom supplies that are shared by everybody, or there could be office supplies that are used to, in the office. That's each individual principal decides how to take his or her allocation and put it in the different areas, but those are supplies that are used across all content areas, or there are office supplies used in the office. I don't know if there's a whole lot to say about that.
It's instructional materials, but it's also office supplies.
Well, some could be, right, well, supplies can be instructional, or they can be just office. So if we have to buy envelopes because we're mailing something, that would come out of there. Is that about it? Doreen, do you have any more information you want to add to that?
You're correct. The general supplies can be instructional, pens, paper, pencils, you know, generic instructional supplies or office supplies. The more specific instructional supplies are within the content areas at the secondary level.
Okay, so, thank you for the clarifications. It's just office supplies, even though, because they're instructional. And then, one other question is, how does the budget, and we may not have gotten there yet, but how does the budget address any potential costs associated with the findings of the consultant looking at the racial imbalance? So if we come up with whatever your scenario is, you know, a new school, busing, whatever it is, how, how do we address that?
There's nothing in here on that. I've made an assumption that anything that, that the consultant comes up with, if the board were interested in it and wanted to go with it, probably would not be able to implement it for September of '16. That if we were going to make a, a large move, that we would change our plan, send it up to the state for approval. By the time that happened, you're probably into June sometime. So realistically, I don't see anything that the consultant comes up with, if the board is interested in it happening in September, in, in the next fiscal year. I think you'd be looking at the budget after that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And that, is it a fair assumption that as long as the state sees that we're making progress on this, they would not have a problem if it took us till September of '17 to implement the new idea?
Your guess is as good as mine. I have no idea what they might or might not do. You'll get that. The consultant will be here live and in living color in February.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Is that it? So, we're here at 10. If there's no burning question that people want to ask, but if there is, I will give people an opportunity to do a speed dating single question. Mrs. Pitco.
I just want to make sure that I'm clear on the process for budget season, because I know we were supposed to have questions in by Friday.
Yes.
I don't assume he got a lot of questions, because I didn't, I didn't hear him say that he did. I just want to make sure, moving forward, what's the next step?
No, actually, we got, no, we got a lot of questions.
Okay.
So there are questions that, within the 10 minutes, some board members didn't have a chance to ask, but they will be put into a Q and A document, so that all the board members will know the answers to the question that some other board member asked, but is, wasn't asked here tonight. And board members are, and board members are welcome to still submit questions, so that they can be addressed by next Tuesday. And if you don't introduce any questions, you are welcome to ask them at the table. You just run the risk that the answer will be, will have to get back to you, if, if it's too detailed of information that you're asking. So any other question that people want to ask? Go ahead. A third bite at the apple.
Let's not sit and deal with the bites at the apple. I did submit a number of questions, and I'm happy to wait for a written response, you know, that you detailed on everything else, but I did have one I wanted to ask now, and if this involves something that I can wait till Tuesday for an answer, I just wanted to emphasize this, was on page 37.
37.
Under the instructional services 301. I will admit, I was not happy seeing this. I don't even, it doesn't, I would like to know the dollar amount affiliated with it, but that's not the reason I wasn't happy about it, and that was the new PSAT testing for grade nine students. And that was the new PSAT testing for grade nine students. And I was hoping to hear, again, it doesn't have to be at this time, I'm happy with next Tuesday, but a fuller explanation of the rationale for that, knowing what we're giving up by doing that, and the monetary amount as well. But I'm far more interested in the philosophy behind it than the money.
And I'll just say that we're not completely there yet on doing this, but if we do want to do it, we have to have money in the budget to do it. So it's possible it doesn't happen, and it's still under discussion right now. But obviously, if we want to do it, it's available. If we want to do it, and we don't budget for it, it puts us in a hole.
Right.
So, it's in the vicinity of $9,000, but we'll get that exact number out, because I think that will be in the written questions.
Just for the ninth grade?
Just for the ninth grade. Something like that.
$8 a student.
$8 a student.
$6,400.
$6,400. So, but we can have more...
Thank you.
...detail on that.
Okay. I see nobody else is raising their hands. Let me just, as a reminder to you, that next Tuesday, we will go through the balance of the book that is in detail. We have referenced the back pages as we asked questions, but we'll go through pages 53 through 122, which is the detail, and then 125 through 177, which is some backup materials. So if you want to focus your questions on those pages and submit them in advance, that would be helpful to the staff. The other thing that we normally do on Tuesday is to ask board members that if they are going to project any recommended amendments or changes to the budget, that they bring the topic up and the suggestion up on Tuesday, so that the staff can adequately plan for, look at the cost implications of that, to make sure that the board is acting on cost information to that idea. So we'll allow time after the end of the Q and A session for board members to identify any changes they may wish to make. And of course, we'll also have a, out to the public for another session of comments from the public. And I think I already mentioned that the Q and A document, we hope to have posted on Friday. That's the Q and A based on today's discussion, and the answers, the questions is provided in advance of this meeting. And I think that's it. Any questions or comments from the board on the next process? Mr. Patton?
Would the Q and A document be available on the website or for the public?
We have always posted them to the website, and so, not exactly sure what time it'll get posted, but I guess it's sometime on Friday? Is that a fair guess? Yeah. And if your question isn't on that document, that means that more study had to be given, so therefore, they'll get it answered on Tuesday instead of in writing. Because we only really want to put questions and answers on there, that we've had an adequate amount of time to really research and make sure that the answer is accurate. And that involves more than just one or two staff people frequently. Those questions are circulated to a variety of staff, so that each person can kind of weigh in from their perspective. Anything else? Hearing none, do I have a motion for adjournment? Mrs. Gerber, Ms. Carnell, all in favor, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you.